Big hamster balls.
That's what he needs.
And he has to get a hall pass to get out of the bubble.
Okay.
Probably has an earache right now.
He, uh, he needs to walk around with safety goggles on all the time, big old gloves.
And a nice big vest so people can see him.
Yes, bright, bright.
I think we could outfit him.
Yes, with all the reflectors and everything on it.
Poor guy.
Is Shanda coming tonight?
She didn't say that she was not. Harold, was it golf? Was, was Shanda at golf?
I did not see her, and technically golf was over about five.
Technically.
Technically. It was a scramble.
Is that a home meet?
Hello.
Hi, Shanda.
You're perfect, Anton.
Right, Anton.
Absolutely.
Don't worry, Shanda, we've just been sitting here waiting for you quietly intentionally. We won't point out that you just walked in or anything.
But it is on camera.
Absolutely, Shanda, good idea.
Harold was ready to do the slow clap as you walked in.
Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Board of Education meeting. It is Monday, September twenty-third. Um, we will... Sorry?
Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge of Allegiance.
Flag salute.
There we go.
Hey, meeting adjourned, alright, yay!
Go call this meeting to order with seven board members present. Um, please stand and join me in the pledge.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Is there a motion to approve tonight's agenda?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, raise your right hand. And that passes seven oh. We have only one item on the consent agenda, um, which is about the OPA invoice. Anything on that, Dr. Cobb?
Nope, normal, normal business.
Second.
All in favor, raise your right hand. And that passes seven oh as well. We do not have any comments from the public this evening. Um, we're gonna move on to section five point oh one, which is USD two ninety board handbook. Dr. Cobb's?
Alright, we've spent a considerable amount of time going through the board handbook and, um, governance and operating procedures. It should all be, um, updated with, uh, changes that we've made over the course of the last two or three months. We can certainly go through it again, page by page if we want to, but since you were the creators of the handbook, I'm fairly positive that you know what it is, and at this point, unless you want me to go through those things, we would just open it up for discussion and then action.
I don't feel any need to go through it page by page. Anyone else?
No.
Oh.
Okay.
But I, I am glad that we have a handbook for the board. I, I think it was something we needed, and I'm glad we did it, and it was a, a good thing to work on together.
Yeah.
I think it is important for us to remember as we go through things, and we'll, we'll bring them back to where we believe our handbook states that we should be as, as we have conversations. We'll just, similar to the same thing that we do with, um, instructional frameworks and with core beliefs and those types of things, we'll just constantly bring those up so they're always on the forefront of our attention, um, and not just sitting in a handbook someplace.
Any further discussion before we ask for a motion?
Madam President, I move that we approve the board handbook as proposed.
Second.
All in favor, raise your right hand. And that passes seven oh. And we'll move on to the, um, Neosha County Community College MOUs.
Yep, two of these, uh, or these two MOUs are, um, are really pretty standard. The, the C-three, which is not this one here, this, this one is, um, in essence, just saying that it's okay for high school students to enroll in college courses without completing high school as of yet. Uh, it is a, it is a one-time MOU that needs to be signed in order for us to continue to have students at the high school level participating in dual credit courses. Not a big deal there. The second one is the C-three agreement, um, and it outlines what we do with the C-three agreement, as well as what we're trying to do with some, uh, additional career and technical education courses through Neosha County, and ultimately stating that those courses do not fall under the C-three agreement, that those are different, um, agreements in the grand scheme of things and how we address them, in part because all CTE courses through Neosha County are now paid for by the state, uh, so there are very few fees or costs associated with them. I think what used to be a welding cost of about eight hundred dollars, uh, for the Level One welding certificate is now like six, eighteen bucks. So, um, just outlines the differences between the two and sets us up for another year of being able to work with Neosha County in that capacity. So two different MOUs, probably both of them need to be agreed upon by our board to move forward.
Do they need to be agreed upon separately?
Yes, if they would, and the action statements are there in the, in the, in board docs.
Any discussion before we ask for motion on this? Is there a motion?
Madam President, I move we approve the MOU for continuation of the C-three initiative.
Second.
All in favor, raise your right hand. And that passes seven oh. And we need a motion for our second action.
Madam President, I move that we approve the MOU with Neosha County to allow our high school students to enroll concurrently into college courses.
Second.
All in favor, raise your right hand. And it has been moved and seconded that we approve the MOU allowing enrollment of secondary pupils.
Okay. Next one is, uh, bus purchase, uh, and you can see the project proposal there that comes with the bid package. Um, this is something that we've been talking about for about the last four or five years. I think we've purchased a bus a year for, for a considerable amount of time. Now, we're getting awfully close to all of our buses having seat belts and air conditioning in them, which is, uh, the seat belts, maybe the most important thing, changes everything that happens within the bus, the safety of the bus, the management of the bus, but certainly, as we continue to have hot days in, uh, in the fall and the spring, the air conditioning is a big deal as well. We got bids from three different groups, and if Dean would scroll up for me there. The one that, uh, is being proposed tonight is for a fifty-three passenger bus from Midwest Transit. Um, it is the, it is not the low bid there, but, um, beats Midwest Bus Sales with the trade-in, but then still falls, I think, about two thousand dollars under Kansas Truck Equipment. The reason that we're requesting Midwest Transit is because we've purchased buses from them before. The difference between Midwest and Kansas is how they respond to constant gravel travel. Um, and the dust and things from a Midwest Transit bus does not come into the bus, uh, near as often. The buses work better on those gravel roads. This is what we would be utilizing it for, and in essence, it's a better bus for gravel travel. Um, and so ultimately, that is the, the proposal from, um, from Tim and our Transportation Department to continue to purchase new buses and be better served for our students in moving forward. Yes, sir.
Uh, so these buses aren't the same brand or make then? You say they're different from one supplier to the next.
No, I don't, I don't know exactly what the differences are between them, but no, they're not the same brand and make. Uh, e- each, each of those bus companies, I believe, offers different components within the bus.
I just thought a bus was yellow.
Yeah, there's a, there's some crazy things that happen in there, and you start talking about Thomas buses versus whatever buses.
Bluebird versus, yeah, they're all kinds of stuff.
And if you talk to transportation guys, they are, most of them are fixated on a particular type of bus that they know and that they understand. Um, and certainly, I think we see that with, uh, with Tim. We've had great luck with Midwest Transit. They've taken care of us very well over the course of the past few years, and their buses are responding great to how we utilize them.
That's good.
Yes, sir.
How long does it take to, once it orders, do we take delivery?
Ooh, that's a good question. I don't know the answer to that. I don't know. Um, in the past, it has not been very long at all. We've had them... Yeah.
Okay.
I didn't know if this was like something they had on the lot or standard.
No, it doesn't take us very long.
Is there any plans on wrapping that bus, similar to the activity bus we had, to have more buses that are promotional than, than not?
Uh, we haven't really discussed it, and, and typically, the ones that we would use on our out-of-town routes would probably not be the ones that we would utilize that for because of the wear and tear that they get on those gravel roads. Um, but if that's something that we want to consider, then certainly we can look at it. We have some really nice buses, and, and wrapping them and doing some more that would be red and white would certainly go a long way in, in promoting what we do here and, and making our kids feel good about the buses that they get on.
I just think, but it looks better than the old yellow bus.
Absolutely. I know that there are some requirements for colors of buses, um, and how we utilize them, uh, so I would have to talk with Tim a little bit about exactly how route bus, buses work, and if they have to be yellow, um, or white. I, there's something that tells me they have to be yellow or white, uh, for route buses. I think actually, most route buses have to be yellow, uh, but I will follow up. I'll make sure that we all know what, what that exact, is exactly.
Yeah, that makes sense, huh?
Yep.
Any further discussion before we ask for a motion for this action?
One last question. Is there a plan the next couple of years to keep buying a bus a year?
We should have two more buses that we need to buy, and then we ought to be able to take a little break. Um, so as we have capital conversations, I think our plan is to continue to purchase a bus a year for the next two years, and then have some time off in that rotation before we, before we go again.
Is that going... So to be, that be said, would that mean bus forty-eight and fifty-two will probably, that's how we would go down that line?
Yep, yep. So she created the proposal, and the proposal was from Frida, but you can see that the intent was, what happens if we can do one bus? What happens if we do two buses? What happens if we can do three buses? Three buses would get us kinda to the end where we wanna be right now. That's a lot of money to spend in capital for, for buses when we still have some life expectancy of our others. Um, so we thought it was best if we continued to do a, a one-bus-a-year process. Yeah, sure. Give ourselves some leverage with our capital budgets.
Madam President, are we ready for a motion? I don't wanna cut off discussion.
I think we're ready.
Madam President, uh, I move that we approve the purchase of a fifty-three passenger bus from Midwest Transit for one hundred thousand, one hundred and, sorry, one hundred thousand, eight hundred and ninety dollars, less than the trade-in of bus fifteen, for twelve thousand dollars.
Second.
All in favor, raise your right hand. And that passes seven oh.
Thank you.
Thank you. And we will move on to reports and presentations. Um, Mrs. Whitaker, Mrs. Steinball, and students will present the plan for Robotics Club implementation.
Good evening. Uh, Mrs. Steinball's here, and I'm gonna let her talk and give you more details, but I want, um, the board to know that she will give you the exact number of students that she has had, um, already inquire and engage in our robotics, um, program. Uh, the students have been spending lots of hours with her after school. They've been coming in on Saturdays. Um, they were able to actually go up to Lawrence Freestate and collaborate with a few other schools in what they call an off-season event, so they got to see robots that other schools have made, um, kinda see that process, talk with the students about that, um, heard really good feedback from our students as they came back from that event, and I know there's another off-season event that we're hoping to, um, be able to attend, um, once we can get our robotics team officially approved.
Thank you for having me again. And the last time I was with you guys, I asked for permission to do the robotics, and it seemed like a handful of you guys wasn't positively sure what I was talking about, so I just brought this. This is what the kids built two Saturdays ago. So this is actually the size of the base of the robot, so, I mean, they're not the little tiny Lego robots, um, and it will, their plans include it to be forty-six inches tall, so right at almost four foot, so it's gonna be a massive robot when it's done, but I wanted to share that with you guys because there is a lot of misconceptions because of Lego robotics, so this is a full-blown vehicle. I mean, it's, it's absolutely amazing, very cool. Um, I believe you shared the schedule. Did you share?
Didn't, not all of it, no. I think, um, most of that schedule really deals with what we do within the, within the school, so they just wanna know the nuts and bolts of what's going on with the robotics program, what we're gonna do.
Um, so basically, I was asked to create a schedule of events for the robotics team and maybe some costs that are associated with that, and, um, several of the recent events that have occurred is, um, occur, are asking for sponsorships from local, uh, businesses, which is actually fantastic. Uh, we got several responses today, um, so we got quite a bit of money coming in from that, and, um, but throughout the rest of the month of September, um, that's basically our, our plan is, as a, um, a team, we need to build a business plan, which is student-built. I mean, it's actually gonna be finished tomorrow because rookie grants are due on Wednesday, so they have to have that to apply. Um, and then in October, I'm hoping, like she said, to attend, um, take my kids to the, it's called Cow Town, which is an off-season event that we would need this robot built for, um, that they would compete in on November first, so we would build that throughout the month of October, and then December would be just, uh, learning how to use different kinda tools, preparing for the January season, and then the first Saturday in January, they introduce the new game, and that goes all the way through March, where we would attend a regional or two, depending on what we can afford at that time, and then we wrap up in, in April. Hopefully, we, we'll get to go to Worlds. That would be awesome. So.
And one thing that Mrs. Steinball and the students have done, um, the great part about this is it's very student-driven, and so the students are coming up with their business plan, and they're creating letters and different, um, brochures and things to send out to local businesses, and one thing we plan to do is keep a list of anybody who donates, whether it's supplies or a monetary donation, um, and share it with the school board, um, so you all are aware of that. This is a very pricey program. Um, it's gonna be very difficult for us to do it without the support of our community, um, and local businesses, and so we wanna be very transparent about that. Um, we don't wanna take advantage of anybody, but we know that we're gonna need assistance in order to allow our students to do the things that they can do, um, through, um, the First Robotics Program.
So part of this, and Mrs. Steinball has a, a pretty extensive, um, plan in place in terms of, of a calendar of events. Uh, a lot of that deals with, um, some fundraising pieces and how USD two ninety and Ottawa High School will partner to ensure that in this first year, we get this thing going, and then there's some self-sustaining pieces that begin to happen over the course of time. So there are a couple of things that, that we need to, to make sure that we understand. One is that we, we have agreed that if the board, um, approves this tonight, that one of the regional events would be paid for in partnership between USD two ninety and Ottawa High School. The cost is expensive, it's six thousand dollars. Um, but again, the opportunity for students to participate, and what you saw in that video last time, uh, provides a, an atmosphere that is, is probably not replicable, um, in our own, in our own system, so it's something that is, that is well worth the money. If they choose to go to other ones, that one is on them to raise those funds and, and continue to participate in that way. There are some other pieces that we'll have to address from a funding mechanism as well. One is, um, there's a lot of time that Mrs. Steinball will spend, um, in sponsoring this event and taking care of, of our kids, taking them places, overseeing the, the construction of a robot, so we will have to, at some point in time, negotiate, uh, a salary stipend or a percentage. Um, that is a part of the negotiated agreement, and ultimately will come up, um, next time we go through that process, but we will be addressing that and see if we can't, uh, we can't take care of that from, from that standpoint. We probably also will need to discuss a, a monetary amount, uh, for, um, we'll call it a club, I guess, at this point, that would be very similar to what the district provides for any other club in that capacity, whether it's basketball, football. We haven't determined what that amount is, or what is appropriate for that, but I do think that it's important for us to provide some level of partnership there, just like we would any of the other activities that are, are, uh, taking place within our building. So those are some things that, that we still have yet to work out. Um, we've not gotten ahead of ourselves, making sure that we know that, that we need board approval before we make any of those decisions. Uh, we'll make those decisions once we have board approval and keep the board informed of how that works.
Any questions?
How many students?
Twenty-two right now. So I would imagine from January, when the official season starts, that number will change. I would anticipate it grow, especially going to these off-season events, then kids are gonna see what really happens in the competition, so I'm hoping that it will grow.
Very good.
About twenty-two is pretty good.
Alright, it's a fantastic number.
Twenty-two students in five weeks is pretty good.
I was gonna say, there's a lot of buzz and excitement, and every time the kids come back from an off-season event, you hear chirpings of it throughout the hallways during, um, cyclone hour, and so I do anticipate that number growing. The other cool thing about First Robotics is Amanda had said this last time, the kids don't have to build the robot, so they might have other niches, like marketing, they might be a good writer, they might be good at some of the mathematical things, and they can still be a part of the team and contribute just in a different way than actually being a part of the programming or the constructing of the robot, which I think that's really awesome, 'cause we're really combining an activity that can just bring a lot of different types of students together that maybe otherwise wouldn't have a reason to get together and do something for the positive.
Something for our board to remember here is that, um, this board has, um, has approved a robotics course at the middle school that really has no parent program to it once they get to the high school. So we've supported that program, we've done a lot of things to help them, uh, build their particular robots and begin a real foundational skill in, in robotics. However, once they leave the middle school and get to the high school, we've not had anything to continue to foster, um, that, that learning process. So one of the things that, that I would imagine that Mrs. Steinball has already thought about, but we'll be going to the middle school and sharing what we're doing with these kids with those kids, and really, again, fostering that, um, that excitement for robotics and letting those kids know, we've got something for you as we move up now, and we'll continue to see that program grow as we, as we move forward.
And it's funny, you said that's not a Lego. I have two kids that have done or are doing Lego and four H, and that's not Lego.
It is not.
And, and in that, I, uh, are we ready for a motion, Madam President?
We are.
I am excited to, uh, make a motion to approve the addition of robotics team at OHS and the, uh, support that we were discussing tonight to make that happen, and great job.
Second.
All in favor, raise your right hand. And that passes seven oh. Thank you very much, Mrs. Steinball, Mrs. Whitaker, for your work.
Absolutely. It's exciting. We'll put lots of stuff on Facebook, too.
We will look forward to it. Alright, so Mrs. Whitaker, um, is going to present to us about Junior/Senior Day on the Job, and I think Colby McCurdy is going to be joining her.
Yes, and I have Annabelle Walker as well. Yes, I brought two friends with me today.
Great, glad to have you.
Um, so I had asked the students to come, um, 'cause we, we know that, uh, Day on the Job has been happening for a while, and we made a decision this year, um, in conjunction with the FCDC to make a pretty big change, where we decided to pull off an event for all of our juniors and seniors this year, um, in attempt to switch it over to an event for our juniors going forward. Um, and so this was something that, when I became the principal last year, I heard a lot from the community members. I had a lot of feedback from a lot of the businesses, um, who participate in that day, and they kept saying, what would it look like, um, if we had, could do this for the juniors instead? And so, um, through talking with Dr. Cobb's and the FCDC and all of the wonderful volunteers that helped put this event together, we really started having those conversations last spring, um, and because of this wonderful community, we were able to pull it off. And so I've asked, um, these two, and Precious Hamilton was gonna join me as well, but she had to go to work, and so she had given me her words, and I've asked them just to share a little bit with you about what that day meant to them. Um, and a lot of students have had some really interesting feedback, especially our seniors, um, regarding, what would this have looked like if I was a junior and able to go to this day? How cool, it would have been a lot more impactful for me. So I'm gonna turn it over to Colby, um, and then Annabelle's gonna share a little bit with you as well.
Uh, again, good evening. My name is Colby McCurdy. Um, I'm a senior at Ottawa High School. Uh, last Tuesday, uh, I met with some people. Uh, we were at the, the city maintenance building, uh, met some people from the ORC, um, who talked to me about how they had opened up, or they'd created jobs for people, uh, depending on what kind of, uh, experience they had. So after high school, I'm looking to go into college and study, uh, kinesiology or strength coaching, and they said that if I do that and I come back, they would actually create a job for me, uh, at the ORC. Um, so for me, that was, that was really cool, because I know that if I do go and do that, I have somewhere to come and, and work afterward, instead of having to go out and have to find somewhere, uh, 'cause I know that there's not very many peo-, uh, places around town. I know there's Nautilus and maybe some other, uh, places that I don't know about. I usually go out to the city to work out, but, uh, anyways, uh, if I'd done this last year, uh, I probably would have been a little more, or a little less on edge about, you know, uh, what I'm gonna do after high school, 'cause I never really thought about, like, you always think about when you're in high school, what am I gonna do in college, but you never think, where am I gonna go after college? So I think that, uh, doing the whole, you know, having juniors go out and do it, it'll make them think about that and not have to stress about it their senior year, so, yeah.
Thank you.
Good evening. I am Annabelle Walker. Um, I thought it was a great experience being out on Senior and Junior Day of the Job, because they opened up my eyes to see what I wanted to do. Like, I wanna go into nursing after high school, and it opened up my eyes to see what new, like, what more things there is other than nursing, 'cause I got to go to the hospital and witness all the nursing, like, families that are around there and what all the nurse, nurses do, and how, like, how much they make, and all the information about nursing, but I also got to go to the Public Works and see how people open businesses and get on their own feet and be able to be out and working out in the community and not just in a hospital. And so I thought it was really eye-opening for me, because as a junior, I don't necessarily know what I wanna do after college, or after high school, and so it was really eye-opening to s- be able to go out and be with the seniors on Day on the Job, because we got to see what the community was and how people build their businesses from the ground up, and just be able to be out there with everybody in our community and see everything.
Thank you.
And Precious, um, one power, I walked into a conversation with Precious Hamilton and Ashlyn Evans, and I'd asked them to come, 'cause during cyclone hour, they are sitting around a table, and basically what I heard them talk about was, man, if I could have done this as a junior, I would have changed some of my classes, I would have enrolled in medical terminology, and I might not have taken, um, this certain CTE course that they both were, um, taking just because they thought it looked fun. Um, and so I do think that, based on the comments that the two shared today and the buzz that we're hearing around school, um, I do really think it's gonna be a very powerful impact for our students being able to participate with, in this day, um, on the job as juniors. The other thing this day provided was Mrs. Tharp, our, our new career and college, um, counselor, was able to get out, and she was able to network with a lot of different businesses that we just haven't had good partnerships with, um, and so I know and anticipate that we'll be coming to you probably with a whole list of, um, community members and businesses that wanna partner with the high school and get our students some additional opportunities, which is really exciting. We've had a lot of, uh, people calling going, hey, how can we be a part of that? My business wasn't asked, um, to engage in that day, so I think that's exciting. Hopefully, we're creating a really positive buzz around our community, um, by getting our students out so they can see what Franklin County and Ottawa, um, City has to offer them, um, post-high school and post what they wanna do post-secondary studies. Any other questions about Day on the Job? It was an awesome day.
I think it's important to note, and, and Mr. McCurdy brought it up, that part of our purpose is to open the eyes of our students to things that exist right here in Franklin County that they may not have otherwise been aware of. A secondary purpose is to make sure that they know that they can come back to work here and that we can keep our best and our brightest. We have talked about generational poverty in our community for the better part of a decade now. Part of the way that we intend to attack that and begin to change the culture in our community and really build upon it is to ensure that our best and our brightest students find a way to stay right here in our community, content you to build our community, be productive citizens within our community, and by showcasing their talents to the employers that are here, and our employers being able to showcase their assets to the students that are here, we have a much greater opportunity in doing so, and hopefully, both of these, uh, two students have the opportunity to see some of the great things that our community provides, and at least gives them pause to think about whether or not they wanna come home after college and be a part of the future of our great community. That's a big part of what Junior/Senior Day on the Job was this year and what will be Junior Day on the Job for years to come.
Thank you, Mrs. Whitaker, and, and thank you, um, Annabelle and Colby, for spending your evening with us, too. Alright, we are going to move on to assessment data, and Mrs. Bybee is going to present our district assessment data from the fall, right, or from?
Yes, fall, uh-huh, fall data. So the first, uh, graph that you see here, this is map data, so I'll share with you our, our map data, and then I'll talk with you about FastBridge. Not going to necessarily show the data from FastBridge at this point, but I'll be talking with you about how we're actually using that data. So, um, this is the student growth summary, and this is what the blue, uh, bars are the observed growth that we saw at, at those grade levels. The diamond is what, um, the projected growth was, so our goal is to reach that diamond or go above it. Uh, what you have here are two, um, the top one is our two, that, fall two thousand eighteen, fall two thousand nineteen, um, data, just showing that comparison, and then the one below that is fall two thousand seventeen to fall two thousand eighteen. So you can see that, uh, we were pretty pleased about starting off where we're at. We feel like it's, um, showing some positive movement. Um, certainly not where we want to be or where we are, um, going to be totally satisfied, but this is definitely a move in the right direction. So you can see our third, for, for this fall, our third, fourth, our sixth, eighth, uh, tenth, and eleventh. and eleventh, essentially, all met that observed, or showed that observed growth that was projected by MAP based on their, the norms that they have for those grade levels. So you can see the difference in, from the year before, it looks like fourth was about the same, fifth closed that gap a little bit, third grew a little bit more, sixth grew, seventh also closed some of that gap, eighth grew, showed some positive movement, ninth grew just a tinge, and then tenth and eleventh grade, it looks like was down a little bit lower, but still where we would want them to be. And then moving up to reading, same type of graph, looking at our observed growth versus what was projected in our reading. And so, again, saw positive movement from our grade levels. Third grade was significantly higher than the projected growth. The fourth grade was right there, fifth grade, it looks like dropped just a little bit, sixth grade grew, seventh grade grew, eighth grade definitely was, saw some positive movement. Same with ninth, a little bit growth there, and then tenth and eleventh is very similar. But what we can see from this is that we were excited to see the growth that we have seen. What we would now from here, because we don't typically just stick with that fall-to-fall look, we're going to take that fall, and now we're going to see where is our growth going to show us moving between winter and spring. Winter, we will, elementary will test in winter, middle school and high school will test in the spring. You notice that we did not test 12th grade. Last year, we did. There's no diamond there. It's because typically, school districts don't test 12th grade with MAP, so there really are no norms out there for 12th grade. So we made the decision this year not even to put our 12th graders to going through testing, just because of the mere fact that we don't really use that data. So then, continuing with MAP, this one is, you've seen this before, too. This is our graph that shows, this is per school, so we split up the schools for elementary, so you can see Garfield, Lincoln, Sunflower First Grade, so forth, all the way through. The blue is the percentage of students that scored in the average or above. The average percentile for MAP is 41st percentile and up. The low average is 21st percentile to the 40th percentile, and then the low percentile is anything below that 20th percentile. So we want to see our blue getting higher, more blue than red or yellow, and we would definitely want to see our yellow as a smaller number. So you can see that the trend line, if you just kind of think about the line going, we want that trend line to be going up, to where our blue is getting larger and our yellow is getting smaller. So again, we see some improvements, some movements in the right direction. There are certain areas and pockets that we can look at the data and use that data to determine what do we need to be looking at within our curriculum, within our instruction, within specific skills that we're covering with our kids. Those are things that teachers will be using the MAP data to be able to drill down and determine how we can help support our students to be able to see that growth. Some of the actions, this is not necessarily just related to math, but our teachers are doing more with the data analysis and making instructional decisions, using that learning continuum as part of our, that comes with MAP. We will start using our instructional framework more with walkthroughs. That's going to, we'll hopefully see the increase in our student achievement, because we're increasing the effectiveness of our instruction by using the instructional framework. So that's how that's all connected with that. A standards-based classroom, we can, we are looking to see what standards the students are becoming proficient in, and therefore, again, with the focus being on the standards, not on our activities or not on the lessons that might be in a textbook, but on specific standards, again, we should continue to see movement in that positive direction with our MAP. Secondary are looking at the tier advisory and open hour. Those are things that will be put in place, that they will be addressing some of the skills that students might be lacking through those opportunities. There's, right now, our teachers are working diligently with our curriculum alignment. So right now, they're continuing work with essential standards and determining at each of their grade levels in their course, what are the essential standards that they are needing to be teaching, what are the, which are the most important. They still have to teach all of the standards, but what are the most important? And then we'll work towards having a scope and sequence within our core, especially our core areas of reading, math, social studies, science, and then the other courses will also have their own scope and sequence. And then, this is what's happening right now, is that we are looking at goal-setting with our students to be able to say, now, here are your MAP results. How do I, here's where we would want you to be. Let's set a goal, and now what are the things that we can do? Let's develop some action steps that can get you to that point. That, we see this positive movement that we have seen, we feel like is more related to that attention that teachers are giving to the administration of that, of our MAP tests, giving, helping students really understand what the purpose is, that we need to take this seriously, that we really want to see what they know and what they have learned. So setting that stage and setting that purpose. I know that Mrs. Whitaker even shared with kids the norms, so they could actually look at the norms themselves to be able to see where they should be scoring with their grade level. All of that creates that accountability for students for their own learning. So I think we haven't, we haven't done that up to this point, where we have really involved our students in understanding, why are we giving these tests, and what can I, as a learner, learn from it and do to be able to help myself get better? I know, just hearing a few kids talk last year, that we were doing some retaking of a test. They said, well, I guess I clicked too fast. And so they're realizing, if I just click through it, then it is going to make me retake it, so, because it's not a valid score, and so I should probably take, give my attention to it. Go ahead and scroll up to the reading. So reading, again, this, you see a little more blue on the reading, which is positive. So we're happy to see that, again, we're moving in the right direction. There's still a lot of yellow, though, that we want to address, that area, so that we can get, we obviously want more blue and red and decrease that yellow. So here are more things that we have put into place. We are doing that FPC implementation for K3. That is full implementation this year with our professional development year for our fourth and fifth grade teachers. Theirs, materials are slowly coming in. We have not received all of them yet, but they are starting to dabble in that a little bit. Our FastBridge offers targeted interventions. I'll talk with you about that more in just a moment. And then focus, our large focus that really, again, we have not done up to this point, is really on our instruction in Tier One. Typically, we use this data, and we talk about, okay, what are the interventions we need to provide for our students? And that would happen during a Tier Two or a Tier Three time. What we really need to be using this data now to focus on is, okay, if you have a large percentage of kids that are in that low to low average in your class, then we need to be looking in your class, with your class instruction in that Tier One time, whether it's reading or whether it's math, on how are you addressing the instruction that happens within your, within that content area? So we typically, our minds is used to going to, straight to intervention, and how are we providing intervention for our kids? But what we're trying to change our mind shift to is, what can we do within our Tier One to alter, to change and tweak our instruction to be able to make sure that we're seeing the achievement or the changes in that? And then, right now, we're continuing to review our system of interventions through MTSS. So what I did here, this graph shows how kids, we were just curious to see how kids retained. So what this is, is this is basically the cohort comparison. So with 3G, for instance, this was how they scored. Forty-two percent of the kids in second grade scored at the average or above, and then when they, now their fall, same group of kids scored 41% average and above. So, and then how many kids, again, second, 33% of Garfield kids, when they were in second grade, were in the low average range, and this year, this fall score, 34%. So it stayed very similar. So what you can see here, then, is what the key is that, how many of the grade levels, there was a positive move. The yellow is more of a no change, they just stayed the same, and red would be an area of concern. And what was actually really a positive piece that was that the kids retained, where typically, you see a slide over the summer, and you might see a large dip, but those kids, what that can tell us is that they retained the information that they learned the year before, that be able to increase that, those kids who were in that average and above, and that's really the column we want to be looking at. Those areas that might be a concern, that's an opportunity for those grade levels to be able to talk about, why is it? Why do you think? For instance, Lincoln Fifth Grade, why did they drop so much from fourth grade spring to fifth grade fall? And those are conversations that we can have with our teachers. And then the reading. Reading saw more green in the secondary area, which is great. We love to see that. So now we can start having conversations with our elementary teachers, too, to see, okay, why our reading scores actually looked pretty, we're looking more positive than what they have in the past, but we do still see some, a little bit of a drop with some of those kids. Okay, and then I'm going to, before we go into FastBridge Learning, come back to this, the others, the MAP scores with gap. It's the other document. There we go. So now what this is, is this is a document that, based similar, shows that cohort that goes all the way across. So when you're starting at 2030, those were last year's second grade scores, and how they did then moving into third grade. But on this one, we're showing the difference. How many kids scored, how many grade levels met their RIT norm, and what, when we look at that growth, we're looking at how, whoop, we're looking at, are we closing the gap? So that difference, when you look at that first row, if you see that the difference was minus 4.3, so they went from, from between how they scored their mean RIT to what the projected mean RIT was, or the norm RIT was. In the fall, was, they were minus 8.3. There was a minus 8.3 difference. In the spring, they closed that gap by four points, so they were at minus 4.3. So then this year now, they still continued to close that gap. So now, we've, now the difference, it was minus 3.9. So, and then what you'll also notice with this, that we're looking at as a real positive, is the differences from our fall mean RIT to where they, where their mean RIT was versus what the norm is, those, the difference in the numbers is much smaller. So, again, we still have a lot of work to do. We're not, at this point, stopping to celebrate and say, yay, let's just continue, status quo. No, we're going to continue to look at, what is, what's the work that needs to be done, so we can make sure that our instruction is continuing to improve, so that our student achievement is improving. But it is great to see that we are starting to see that gap decrease a bit. So our goal will be that that will decrease. When you look at the difference and you have that growth, that we're going to decrease those differences even more so by spring with MAP. Any questions on that, on the data that I've just shared with you, or any comments?
Dean, would you click on the reading one as well, so that you can see that?
Oh, yes. So the green is happy to see, because that means we have either, we have met the norm for those grade levels, and that we have also closed the gap.
You can see from a reading standpoint, we had significant growth in reading at nearly every grade level. And even when we didn't see growth, it's minute drops in areas that you would expect to see drops. When reading every day becomes so important, those are your third, fourth, and fifth graders that now have a summer gap of reading. If their parents are not reading to them, then we do expect some declination. And to have it only be a .4 declination or a .9 declination is pretty positive, especially considering the growth in all of the other areas.
And when you look at the fall score versus the fall norm, they were very close. When you look at fourth grade, how close they were, fifth grade was very close, those two grade levels in particular. They are definitely closing the gap, but they were very close to meeting the fall norm. That's exciting news. It's good for our teachers to see that the work that they're putting in, and the, there is so much validity to helping our students understand the purpose of why we're giving these tests and to be able to take it seriously, and for us to be able to create that environment for them that's going to be successful, for them to show us what their, what their level of knowledge is. Yes?
I know there's been a lot of talk and concern about test scores of late. This seems to be positive news.
Yes.
What would you attribute the positive news to?
Well, I think it's probably too soon to say that it's all due to Fountas and Penal Classroom, or that it's all due to the instructional framework. We haven't really worked with that enough yet. I think it is, we feel like that it is attributed to putting the focus back on the importance of these tests, and really looking at that administration and the environment that the kids are taking their tests in, and making sure that it's positive, and then following up with those goal-setting conversations with our kids, sharing those, the RIT scores with them, so that they know, okay, this is how I scored. A lot of them are so excited to find out what their RIT score was, to see, did I grow?
I think the standards-based grading conversation also plays a piece in this, certainly at the elementary level, but definitively at the secondary level, as it has sparked some conversation about not allowing students the opportunity to opt out of learning. So the conversation has really been with our staff about ensuring that students are learning, that we don't give up on them, that we don't take a lack of answer or a lack of turning in a paper as something that is okay. And it has changed a mindset within the building, and as we've gone through these assessments, you've seen that come through, and how our teachers are preparing our students for this. They're developing goals. They're having real conversations with kids about the importance of taking these assessments. So I don't know that you could ever pinpoint it on one thing, but I do think, across the district, from first grade all the way through 11th grade in terms of MAP assessments, the preparation and the importance and what teachers have done to really focus kids to show what they know has changed dramatically in the short time of one year. And I think that's why we're seeing the growth that we're seeing here. But the emphasis on instruction is going to play the biggest role here. And we are hopeful that we will continue to see this type of growth, because the emphasis on instruction has been so great at every grade level and at every building.
And I think we're trying really hard to be able to have those conversations with teachers, and for teachers to be able to, through, thank goodness, through our PLCs, to be able to have collaborative conversations about, what does this mean for my classroom? When I look at my scores, what does that mean, and what, how can I make changes to be able to help my kids to grow? And so we're having those conversations, and I think those are very valuable, because we definitely are, whereas a lot of expertise in our teachers. And so that they are sharing with each other, learning from each other, and so I think we're developing that culture of that this, this is, it's not just about the test, and it's not just a checkoff that, okay, now the district office has those scores, but it's, we really are using these to be able to help ourselves, to get our students where they would want them to be in that they're learning.
I brought this up with Dr. Cobb, so I don't know who I'm making the request of, but I'd like to see our test calendar. I, for one, think we test way too much, and I think one of the fallacies we have is we have test burnout. And if we're going to use MAP, which I think is a great resource, then, you know, I think that one thing we ought to do is focus on MAP, and I don't know what the state laws require, but I think we've spent an enormous amount of time testing. And so I am thrilled about the outcome of this, but I am concerned in the future that we impact test scores with so much testing. And I don't know if there's anything we can do to alleviate any of that, but I think it would be interesting to look at that.
Well, I think we are definitely starting conversations through our TASAN MTSS process that we're going through, we, to be able to determine what our system of MTSS looks like and providing interventions for kids. We, to be able to determine what, what our system of MTSS looks like and providing interventions for kids. And one of the areas is looking at what are our assessments, how are they used, what's the purpose? What's the data that we're using and how are we using them? Some of the assessments that we use are state-driven. And then some of the assessments we use based on how we can use for our teachers. So as I move into FastBridge, I'll talk with you a little bit about the difference of how we're using FastBridge. FastBridge, if you remember, is taking the place of AmesWeb, which was a universal screener for fluency and comprehension. FastBridge actually offers a lot more subtests or areas that we can use to be able to identify specific skills. That our students might be lacking in. So it is considered a universal screener. And that's, which, which means that it's a kind of a dipstick to be able to tell where our kids are at. So that we can then drill down into specific skills to be able to offer interventions. So if you'd like to switch to the fast, uh, let's, actually, let's go to, back to the, that one. Scroll on up. So these are all of the, the recommended subtests for, for FastBridge Learning. For kindergarten first, second through fifth and sixth, sixth through twelfth grade. On the right are all of the other optional tests or that could be used for either diagnostic. If you, diagnostic meaning if we give those kids the, the tests in the table. And we determine that we have some kiddos that are really at risk. We can drill down further into word rhyming, word blending, word segmenting, all of that. When you see PA, that's all phonemic awareness. Those are all skills that happen really before you get into your phonics level. So if, if kids have holes in those areas, we know that we need to fill those before they're going to. Well, quite often it's at the same time, but for them to be able to really understand how words are put together. So that's typically done in kindergarten. But you will see phonemic awareness happening in first grade, second grade, based on what students' needs are. So that gives us some options of, of other tests to be able to do more diagnostic on. But we went with the recommendation of those that are in the chart as the recommendation from FastBridge to start with. To be able to start from there so that we can see what kind of information we can get from it. And how closely, we're, what we're looking at is how closely it's aligned to. Does it give us the same information or different information from MAP? And then this is how we would determine our intervention groups. So that we, because it does drill down more specific skills to determine what skills we would be providing for students during intervention time. So then math is the next area. Math, at this point, we are just giving to K five. Because we don't have a system of interventions in place for math, teachers are providing interventions for students K five within their own classrooms. We did not move up to the six twelve yet at this point to do math. So these are the, the skills that are the subtests that are offered or that are recommended from FastBridge Learning that we gave to, to our students. K one, that's all a one-on-one test. So our teacher, we had a, we called it a FAST team. That title teachers and title aides that went to each of the elementary schools. To be able to systematically and effectively get through the testing. So we didn't take a whole lot of instruction time out. So that was done by the team. And then the, the AMATH and the A-reading, automaticity for math and automaticity for reading. Those were both done on a computer and they're an adaptive test. And that was done in the classroom, again, done by title aides, myself, school psych. And then the classroom teacher was in there, but the classroom teacher was more there at this point for just monitoring. They, we were doing, we had, the others had been trained in how to give this test. So we were kind of doing a team aspect to try to get through. The test is with, with as much, as a little disruption as possible to our instructional day. So then, if you scroll on down. So how can these help our teachers? So FastBridge is divided into three areas when teachers receive their reports. That they can log into to see how their kids did. There's, there are reports for screening and problem identification. And those are reports that teachers would be able to use right now. Group screening, screening to intervention and a class list. Class list actually shows every single test that was given to the kids in their class. So they could see overall, how did their class do? And how can that help them within their instruction in their classroom? Then there's an analysis and planning section that gives some reports to be able to help teachers with exactly that. Let's analyze those individual skills and be able to plan how we can provide interventions and progress monitoring for them. And then the last one is intervention and monitoring. So those are all ta- all reports that will help teachers to be able to understand. Who, who needs intervention group? What can we provide for them during that intervention group? What progress monitoring do we need to do? You have to do progress monitoring in order, when you're providing an intervention, to be able to know, is that intervention the appropriate intervention for them? And do we need to either change intervention or are they testing out of it? Are they getting to where they need to be? And then this is also an area where there are reports there that could be used for a sit team. If a student is needing further support and their teacher might be taking them to their school sit team for, to see what other kind of supports we can provide for them. And there's also a report there that can be used to show parents. So I thought what I would do is just show you really quickly.
So this is.
You're the driver.
I'm the driver now, I'm gonna come new. So this is what, when a teacher logs in. Oh gosh, Dean. Can I?
You're driving.
I know, but can I see it on here?
No.
I can't do the, or not.
Ooh, one more time. One more time.
One more time. Take three.
You can't have it on both? Okay, well then I'll figure it out.
Got it.
Oh, there we go, okay.
Ten shortcuts.
So when a teacher logs in, there are actually like to-do lists that give them things that they can be used. It gives them information on, hey, here's a, a report that would be really good for you to use. Your kid's just finished screening. And it gives them that information right there to, that they can learn more about if they haven't already learned it from us. So when they, and this is, by the way, this is not, this is a training site, so there's no kids' names on there. This is not one of our, our kiddos. So I've pulled down a certain teacher. These are the, the tests that are, are the reports that are available. To her. And so here's the, the screening and problem identification, all of these reports go with that. The analysis and planning and the intervention and monitoring. And the, the coolest report probably that the teachers are gonna be very excited about is the one that's called screening to intervention. Because what this shows, and this is so much more than what AmesWeb gave us. So it, it will show this teacher how her kids overall did in each of the assessments. It, this is talking about whole group instruction. It will give a recommendation based, this one doesn't because again, it's a sample one and there weren't enough kids' reports in there. But it will give a recommendation as a whole group recommendation. So if your students, like we saw some, that students were very low in phonics and fluency. Your whole class needs to be working on phonics and fluency, not just during an intervention time. And then it gives the teacher these next steps as to what they can do in order to provide that added fluency. Or phon- phonics or phonemic awareness area. They can develop their progress monitoring groups right on this page. This is what the scores look like. If there's a double exclamation mark, it lets the teachers know, oop, that's a kiddo who's at high risk. And in the phonemic awareness area. Now, they might be a, an okay reader. We did see some that their general reading actually was pretty strong, but their phonemic awareness was high risk. So that may not seem like a problem now, but as they get older, what that does is that kind of flags them that that's going to be harder for them to be able to decipher harder words. And so that would be something we would just look at. Doesn't mean we have to provide that intervention, but it's something to look at. Over here, it gives suggestions on that this kiddo needs to start with phonemic awareness and phonics or phonics and fluency. Or vocabulary and comprehension. And then when you click on that, it takes you to some lessons. So it gives you over here in this order, here are some lessons that these kids can do to be able to address that fluency and comprehension. So in this kiddo, they need to have this about, a small amount of vocabulary and a lot of comprehension is what this kiddo needs for their intervention. So it gives you over here the skills that they need. There's small, what could happen during small group instruction approximately, how many days a week should, should they spend on it? Now, that doesn't mean that this kiddo would have to be in four different groups. As a teacher, you would decide where is this student's need? And then, and then it gives you what you would progress monitor, what test you would progress monitor on. It gives you more information on where their student skills are right now, what their goals and milestones. It just gives, it honestly gives all kinds of information. So back on this other page, let's see how I go back here. Going back to this. Report. This is the part why we're looking at all of, you know, we can't make determinations on just, we're so new to FastBridge. But we are looking at how closely are, is this aligned to the information that MAP gives us? Over here, like this gives a Lexile. Lexile is a number that basically is a student's reading level. And MAP gives you that. So we're looking to see how closely are those correlated? Does MAP give the same or similar Lexile? And then you can drop down to this box and it gives you the MAP RIT score. So it's basically saying the way a kid scored on FastBridge, they would say that it's prob- they're probably going to score in this range. Now, it might not be exact, but there, it could be in that, that range. There's also a Fontes and Pennell guided reading where it basically says for, according to how they scored on FastBridge. That this kiddo would be reading at a J or K level, which is, which is through Fontes and Pennell classroom. So it gives us a lot of information that we were actually very excited about, that we didn't even realize when we purchased this. It's giving us more information. So it is important for us to be looking at how, how is this information being used? What do we get from it? And, and are there, are there determinations that we can make about the assessments that we're giving?
So one of the things that is happening in the, in the world of education is we're seeing a huge shift in what is happening within the classroom. This is, an analogy would be like, like saying that it's still okay for the skills to be taught to a mechanic. Is that they can change the carburetor on a, on a three hundred and fifty cubic inch Chevy motor. Where in today's day and age, we're all fuel injected, we've got electronic parts, there are computers associated with it. There are all sorts of things that just doesn't work that way anymore. The world of a teacher is very similar and you're seeing it through FastBridge and all of the things that are expected of a teacher in a classroom these days. The, Harold brought up a good point about over-assessment. And so part of what we're talking about is how, how we correlate our assessments and what is it that we want to know from them? And part of what we're doing over the course of the next two assessment periods, from fall to winter to spring. Is seeing how FastBridge and MAP correlate with one another. In the first assessment, their correlation was pretty clear. What we saw from MAP was basically what we saw from FastBridge. There are other aspects of state mandates that are going to force our hands in some of these. So one of the things that FastBridge does that MAP does not do is that addresses key assessments that identify dyslexia traits. Dyslexia is a huge conversation in the state right now. And there is a, a mandate being ready to, to be proposed in front of the Kansas Association of School Boards. That would require us to assess on dyslexia traits three times a year, fall, winter and spring. FastBridge would be the assessment that would address that for us. So certainly FastBridge is going to have to continue so that we meet all the protocols of our state. But as we start taking a look at that assessment protocol, we'll try to identify all of the, all of the ones that are mandated by the state. That we're not just giving this assessment because we say, hey, this would be a fun assessment to give. But because there is some mandate that requires us to address this assessment in this way to meet the needs of this subset of kids. And as we go through that, we will also identify which of those assessments correlate with one another. And over the course of the year, we will start taking a look at how many of those assessments are providing us the same or similar information? For us to be able to make data-driven decisions off of. There is a lot of work for us to do. Again, we have overlooked assessments in our district for a long time. In terms of driving our decision-making and the processes that we utilize to make decisions about the best. Best resources for our kids, the best instructional resources for our kids, what we want from our curriculum for our kids. And utilizing that data now has certainly begun to show its, its benefit for us in terms of how we see a response. But there is a lot more work to do and our teachers are gonna have to help us on this. They're certainly the experts in the classroom and as they dive deeper into what FastBridge can provide, we will learn more and more about how it impacts our learning overall.
Part of the dis- dyslexia mandate goes, we'll, we'll have the expectation that we're providing professional development also for our teachers in, in those areas. All of those subtests in kindergarten and first grade are subtests that they would be looking at, need to be part of a screener for dyslexia. And so then, and also some of those actually, the ones I was talking with about with the phonemic awareness piece. And then also what we'll need to be looking at then is, are we making sure that all of our teachers understand? Okay, so if I see that my kiddo is, my kids are low in concepts of print or onset sounds. Do I know how to instruct that within my reading instruction? So that we can ma- or during intervention, so that we can make sure that we are providing that. That will be part also of that mandate. So we are thinking of those things that are to come from the state as we're addressing this. Susan?
I guess for me, while we will, I think we, this is in, in its beginning phase. And we said it was gonna take probably five years. So as we go through the process, keep in mind that we might over-test. But for right now, they've got to figure out what they need in terms of data and which way to take the curriculum. So we've got to listen and take heed to what.
We also, we also need to not overwhelm our teachers. For instance, the reason we went with the FAST team aspect was because it just would have been too much to try to train our teachers how to give this test yet at, at the beginning of the year. So our goal would be that our teachers can start taking over that, the A-reading and the auto-reading, the AMATH, the auto-math that's done on the computer. And that, but that again is a timeline that we'll need to roll out slowly so that we're not also overwhelming our teachers. Cause we do need to provide the training for them in order to do that. So it was easier to start with a group, get to really, a smaller group, get to really understand how to administer the test, what we can learn from it. How we can then slowly work our teachers into their, building their knowledge level with all of that.
To echo what Susan just said, the reason I ask about that, I got a phone call on the way to meeting tonight. And I hadn't put two and two together, I'm kind of slow. That in five and a half months, we just wrapped up testing recently. Okay, in five and a half months, it's spring break and we're going to start testing right before and right after spring break. So we start talking about that we have a school year to teach our kiddos. And yet the reality of it is, is that in five and a half months, we're right back into the testing and bam, bam, bam. So I'm not saying we should or shouldn't do testing. I'm certainly not an expert in what you do, so I'm not getting your deal. It just, it caught me off guard that we're going right back in. And that doesn't include what you're gonna do for winter MAP. But, and then the second of all, I certainly agree with the dyslexy question. Because I read something over the weekend and I can't remember. But it's scary how many of our kids coming in, and I'm just in general over, kids entering have dyslexia. And you know, of some varying degree. So I think it's great that we are being proactive in that area and this can help us identify that. So thumbs up for doing that.
I have a question about that testing. You said they were gonna test three times a year for dyslexia?
Well, for, yes, yes.
That is the proposed mandate to K.
Right.
Fall, winter and, and spring screen for dyslexia.
And it's not just dyslexia, but they will say dyslexia type, dyslexic type characteristics. So it's not basically that we're screening, we're gonna let a parent know, hey, your child is dyslexic. But that we are providing a screening that can help with those types of characteristics.
Help identify the traits.
Right. Right.
So it would be a, a preemptive conversation before it goes too far, in essence.
And then the purpose of the test then is to see if, if any of the interventions have helped, is that?
The progress monitoring, yes. So once you determine which kids need the interventions, then you do progress monitoring on whatever your pred- provide, whatever intervention you're providing to see if that intervention is working, are they making progress? If not, let's make a change to the intervention. Um, let's do, you know, do we need to decrease the, or increase the amount of time that that child is, is ge- getting that intervention? There's various things that teachers can do to be able to address if, if they're not making progress on the intervention.
I'm excited that you guys are giving it focus and that it's working.
Mm-hmm.
It's good to see.
Well, we're definitely in the learning process. Every time we get in there, we find something new that it has to offer, so.
Well, and you have to get the data you need and then decide what you don't need. So it's up to you guys.
I'm also excited that we have a curriculum director.
Well, thank you.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Well, you're providing the direction that we desperately need.
Thank you. I, I, it is a collaborative effort, I will tell you that.
And I think it's excellent that the MAP scores uh, are, are so positive. I mean, I know we've got work to do. I'm not, no high fives, but I think that there is, uh, that's great news. And it was goo- interesting to hear what you attributed that to. So job well done to everybody.
Mm-hmm. Absolutely.
And, and I think I asked the question um, some months ago about when we, when we were going to start to see some change. And I think it's, it's exciting that we've already seen a little bit of change in that right direction. So that, that's wonderful and, and shows how hard everyone's been working for sure. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Anything else?
All right. I don't think so. Thank you, Mrs. Bybee. Okay, we are on to board reports. Anyone like to start?
Well, it's been busy.
It has been. Do you, Linda, do you want to share?
Teacher of the Year.
Mm-hmm.
That we went to Topeka to uh, to cheer on our USD two ninety Teachers of the Year, all, all of whom we're deserving. Uh, day on the job was, I got to do j- day on the job and it was, for me, it's just fun to see former students, so.
Yes.
And then we had the city-county USD two ninety lunch, always interesting to see what's going on in the county and the city and how we all come together to make it happen.
Absolutely.
There may have been others.
I went to city-county and I think it was unique to echo in what Linda was saying at the end. You know, typically it's, everybody, you know, each entity kind of talks about what they're doing. And then Dr. Cobb did a nice job of talking about an issue that's prevalent with us and, and solicited uh, city and county input on how to uh, help on that. I think it was a great job by Dr. Cobb's to um, bring the other two entities in for that discussion a little bit. And it was just a ten or fifteen minute discussion, but it, it was, I thought it was very interesting. And then the girls' golf, I went out and saw that this afternoon. I was going to give Mr. Graff grief because he was driving around in a golf cart with a Guler. And, you know, but anyway, no, it, it was interesting to see, talk to the coaches uh, from other uh, schools as well. See the girls out there doing that. Uh, hats off to the girls' golf team. Uh, they are off to a good start this year. And it's interesting to see people who had never picked up golf ca- and clubs before on the golf course. So that's good.
I, I am watching middle school football for the first time in twenty-something years.
All right.
Um, I also attended the uh, city-county two ninety meeting with uh, Harold and Linda. And it, it was, it was good as always and it is really interesting how, um, you know, even though we're all different parts of the community, how there are so many issues that do involve us all together. So it's nice to have that connection and have that avenue of communication open. Um, I also attended a Teacher of the Year award and we had, um, it was Randy Heglett uh, from Garfield and Katie Carson from OMS who had those honors of being Kansas Teachers of the Year for our region. And um, they represented us very well and it was nice to see. So congratulations again to them for that. Um, what else? Um, there were three of us that attended um, as parents uh, to the National Honor Society inductions uh, last week. And we got to hear Mrs. Steinbach, who was our guest speaker for that event. And thank you for that. That was enjoyable. Um, and then I made the trip uh, last week to Garden City um, as part of the uh, uh, Kansas Leadership for Tomorrow program that I'm involved in and got to see uh, what life is like at the other end of the state. Um, it was very interesting. Some things that uh, I thought about tonight when we had the school bus discussion is because of the length of travel that their children have to go to, um, to travel and participate in sports, their buses are um, pretty amazing. I was transported around in, in what people were jokingly calling the superintendent's party bus. Because they had, I, they had TVs, they were, they were, you know, re- buses. Um, but it was very interesting to see that. Um, I heard the word FastBridge came up quite a bit. And I think that's something that seems to be very popular with, with districts. Um, it, it was great to hear about Garden City. They started the school year with thirty-six open positions for teaching. Uh, they were very aware of the teacher shortage. They were not at all surprised by that. That's pretty typical for them. Um, and they had a really nice presentation that I would like to get a copy of and share with you all about what they do. Um, because they, not only are we all suffering that teacher shortage, but eh, when you live in Western Kansas, it, it adds another factor to that um, issue that's going on. So um, that was very interesting as well.
See lots of cows?
Lots of cows. Might have been a, a blue or red light somewhere along the way.
Yeah.
It was an interesting trip. So, yep.
Blue or red or blue and red?
Or red. Yeah, I don't know. I'm not sure. But uh, anyway. Anyone else have anything?
I had a question too. On our longer, eh, there was a, I was reading some articles this weekend and one of them was about longer bus routes and making the buses so they can do their homework on them and all those kind of things. Do we have plans for things like that or for the longer ones or?
Talked about it. There's grant opportunities available as well.
Okay.
What I will tell you is that when we provide free hotspots to all of our students, we have trouble giving them away. So we can't even give hotspots away for free to high school students right now, which is a good problem to have. Um, but we do have like our activity buses or our uh, sports bus. When they leave, they take a hotspot with them.
I, I would also tell you that in the grand scheme of things, we do not spend a lot of time on buses. Um, most of our route buses are fifty minutes or less. So we're not spending a lot of time on a, on a bus in comparison. You want to talk about West Franklin and, and some of the other districts that have much longer routes than we do, we do not spend a lot of time on them. And our activity routes are, I mean, the Frontier League is predominantly within an hour of one another. And that is, again, very minimal in comparison to, to other schools. So we have been very lucky to not have to have kids spend an inordinate amount of time on a bus. I think really, any time on a bus is too much time on a bus. If we could just transport kids, teleport them from place to place, that would be great. Um, but it, there is some, some downtime on a bus, but in the grand scheme of things, we spend very little time on buses again in comparison to other districts. So it's pretty, it's a pretty positive thing for us and the, the league in which we participate in from an activity standpoint.
And I will clarify, I mentioned that um, three of us were there at that NHS ceremony and that was uh, Mr. Wingerton and Mrs. Olmsted were, was there also. So, well done. Um, if no one else has anything, we will move on. We do not need an executive session for um, personnel tonight, but you all have been presented with a personnel report. Um, is there a motion to approve the personnel report?
So moved.
Second?
All in favor, raise your right hand. And that passes seven oh. And we are down to announcements.
A couple of things. Um, one, I don't know that all of you are aware, but I sit on the executive board for um, accreditation with Cognia, which used to be Advanced Ed. Uh, and there is a great deal of discussion going on in the state right now about KISA uh, and its proficiency in terms of, of truly being a school improvement model. Um, I will tell you that um, one of the largest school districts in the state has approached Cognia or Advanced Ed about moving away from KISA and into that model. If that happens, I think you will honestly see, see a collapse of KISA. If, if that district chooses to move out, you will see a number of them follow suit. Um, and then I think we have a completely different conversation about the accreditation model in the state of Kansas. Um, and honestly, I think we are in a really good spot. We have done this. We know how it works. We've utilized the system. Um, it is certainly a better improvement model than what KISA can provide us right now. But that is an interesting conversation going forward. Uh, today, all of our administrative group met with TAZN. This goes back to the conversation about how we utilize data to drive our intervention. We have spent a lot of time in discussing data and what it is that we want to accomplish, ensuring that we have sound tier-one instructional strategies across the board. And we will continue to work with them as we are starting to develop what intervention will look like in our district and how we implement both reading or all three, reading, math and social emotional intervention with, within our district. Currently, our MTS ma- MTSS model only encompasses reading across the board. So it will be a change in structure in terms of how we provide intervention. Uh, but certainly that's the reason why we brought TAZN in to, to make sure that we can begin to address those things. On Thursday, we have a redesign visit. Uh, Jay Scott and Tammy something, or I can't remember her last name uh, at the, at the, at the time. Um, but they will be here on Thursday. Tammy will be going through our elementary schools to kind of begin to see what um, the change from redesign has, has created in our elementaries. Jay will be in the middle school and high school, uh, both of them in the morning from about nine to noon uh, to start taking a look at what we've done with redesign, which will be an interesting visit and, and one that we're looking forward to. October fourth is the first Friday. Uh, and then again, October seventeenth is the Wall of Honor dinner. I believe that is the weekend of homecoming. So homecoming, nope, next weekend is home?
Fourth is home.
Homecoming is fourth. Yep. So homecoming is on the fourth. Uh, always a, always a good time to get back to homecoming and see everybody that comes in for that event. Uh, and then we'll do Wall of Honor on the seventeenth.
Lots of tours.
Lots of tours.
All right. Well, at this time, if somebody would like to make a motion to adjourn the meeting?
So moved.
Second? All in favor, raise your right hand. And that passes seven oh. Thank you.